Enjoy yourself.
Okay, so good evening. It is six thirty and I will call this meeting of the Planning Commission to order. The first item on the agenda is the adoption of the agenda. Does staff have any changes?
No changes from staff.
Commissioners? Yes.
Um, I request that the last item on the agenda, which is my item, be moved to the, closer to the front of the agenda.
Okay.
Do we need to vote on that, or are we okay?
Uh, yes.
Yes, we need to vote on it.
Yes.
Do I hear a motion for that?
Uh, yeah, I move that we move that last item, item five, up to the front of the agenda.
To item three. Five to three?
Yeah, five to three, I'm sorry, yeah.
I'll second that.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed say nay. Motion carries. So the next item then is the approval of the meeting minutes from the September twenty-third, two thousand and nineteen Planning Commission meeting. Does staff have any changes?
No changes from staff.
Commissioners? Uh, seeing none, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from the September twenty-third meeting. Is there written?
I second.
All those in favor say aye. Oh, excuse me. Is there any discussion? Nope, okay. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed say nay? Motion carries. Okay, so then... The third item will be the public hearing for a conditional use permit to allow standing seam metal roofing on a single-family home and a variance for a driveway setback at one-five-zero-zero Joseph Street, presented by Ms. Geros.
I'm gonna abstain.
Okay, we have the, uh, public hearing this evening. Um, there are two items that are associated with this application. One is a conditional use permit, and that is what the public hearing is for. Uh, the conditional use permit is to allow the use of standing seam metal roofing material in the, uh, single-family residential zoning district. And item two is a variance, and that's to consider allowing the driveway setback on part of the property to be situated one foot versus five feet from the, uh, south side property line. And the property, uh, subject site is at fifteen-hundred Joseph Street. The, in terms of the standing seam metal roof, um, just for information for the Planning Commission and for the public, is that the city updated the ordinance in two thousand and thirteen, uh, following, uh, pretty extensive study by the Planning Commission, uh, along with staff, to, um, allow for metal roofing materials in the forms of like metal shakes, metal shingles, uh, metal tiles, those types of things, uh, just as a rule of, uh, basically, uh, di- changes in technology and different roofing materials. At that point in time, uh, Planning Commission and City Council did not feel it was appropriate to have standing seam metal roofing in single-family residential areas and single-family homes. Uh, the feeling was that was more of a commercial-type product, and they felt it was appropriate, and it is, uh, permitted, uh, material in the business districts, the industrial districts, and then also the high-density residential districts. Uh, they did not want to just preclude it outright, uh, so they created a conditional use permit process if folks, uh, wanted to use this material on their homes. And that would be in the R-one, uh, single-family residential district, uh, and R-two, which is our, um, uh, basically twin home district. You can have a standing seam metal roof just by, via a building permit in southwest Burnsville. Uh, and that area being more, uh, rural, the R-one A Rural Residential, um, Council and Planning Commission felt that it was, uh, appropriate, uh, to allow that type of material. I do know that we have had just one conditional use permit, uh, back in two thousand and fourteen, and that was to allow standing seam metal roofing on that, and that was approved. There have been other, um, applications for them, but they've mostly been in southwest Burnsville. Um, we have had a number of inquiries from folks about doing part of their home, perhaps, uh, with a standing seam metal, primarily, uh, interest if you have, uh, bay windows or bow windows, very common to do something like that. Um, as a result of that, one of the items that, uh, staff is, um, considering is to include that as a discussion point when Planning Commission, when you look at your work plan for next year. Um, if it's still appropriate, you know, if we still feel the same way, uh, or, uh, think that there could be changes or relaxation in, in that standard. The subject site is Zoned R-one. It's a lake shore lot, so it's in the Shoreland District. Want to draw your attention to the, uh, to the aerial photo. You can see by this, this property was actually replatted, um, last year, when the applicants, uh, purchased the property. The structure that's shown there is the old, um, house or cabin. This property was, uh, created and developed well before the city incorporated in nineteen sixty-four, and well before all of our ordinances, uh, came into effect, uh, that apply this. So what, um, the applicant was able to do at that point in time is there was, uh, right-of-way for Joseph Street in this area that had been vacated a number of years ago, but it was never actually officially combined with the abutting properties. So with the plat, they did accomplish that, uh, and actually increased, uh, somewhat the size of the property. But it's a very small property in relation to other, um, single-family zoning, uh, lots, which would be ten thousand square feet. And actually, the standard for lake shore lots on Crystal Lake, for example, would be twenty thousand square feet. Um, this, uh, lot is, uh, just under about seven thousand square feet, to give you an idea. The other thing that I wanted to draw your attention to is, um, kind of because of the right-of-way in through here, and part of it, um, went to the applicant, and then part of it, um, uh, the property owners to the south are able to acquire, should they decide to do so in the future, but you have this, uh, really odd property line here. And this is where the variance comes into play. Um, the area of the variance we're gonna be discussing is, uh, in this area right in through here. And then the right-of-way for Joseph Street, uh, this actually extended, the blacktop extended a little bit further down toward the lake, um, and it has just never been removed, or, um, it, it's just as is, and has been existing for any number of years. What I wanted to show Commissioners and the public is that, um, the subject site, the new home, is shown on this aerial photograph. And what they're proposing is really to include the standing seam metal roofing, kind of as an architectural treatment, uh, for the home. Most of the roof is already, um, done with, uh, your standard shingles, the standard asphalt-type of shingles. But they're looking to use, um, an area on the, uh, garage that is basically on the east side of the house, and then a couple of, um, uh, I call them canopies, um, just in different areas on each other side of the home. So that is what is being proposed, and the reason that I wanted to show you this is, the area is, um, uh, is a developed neighborhood, a lot of mature trees, uh, and indeed even to the east, um, there are some evergreen trees in this location. And also the fact that, um, the homes don't really look toward the property. Uh, they're really oriented to be lake shore homes, of course, looking out to the lake. And our next, you know, nearest structures, uh, in these locations, no one really has a direct view, if you will, of that part that'll be most visible. And then the applicant did provide, um, graphics showing the locations for the standing seam metal. Again, primarily the largest area over part of the garage, and then the awnings over the entry and the garage door. And then also, um, this shows the, uh, the entry, um, a little bit, uh, different profile of the garage, and the awning, if you will, or canopy over the garage door. On the lake side, uh, of the home, there is a bank of windows, so another awning in that location on the first floor. Then on the north side, another awning where they have, uh, doors leading out, uh, on the north side of the home. So in terms of a conditional use permit, typically what this means is a use is considered permitted, but, um, there is some need anticipated, um, by the city that may need to look at something to see if there are any impacts to, uh, abutting properties or other properties in the neighborhood, and then, uh, any mitigating factors can be added as conditions. In this is, uh, I have gone over, no homes will have a direct view of the standing seam metal roofing. We have established, um, trees in the neighborhood, um, the homes face the lake to the north and to the south, uh, similar to the applicant's home, and the proposed roofing material is not something that's going to endanger or be detrimental uh, to public health, safety, welfare. Also, the, uh, we're dealing, or looking at enhancement, uh, of the standards, I think, by the, uh, architectural elements that they're choosing to use this material on, and, uh, they'll be designed, constructed, maintained, and will be compatible, I think, with the residential neighborhood and, uh, the other homes. There's nothing that'll be hazardous or disturbing to existing or future uses. The second item is related to the variance, part of the application. Uh, in two thousand and fourteen, the applicant did go through and received, um, several different variances in order to be able to reconstruct on the site, and that is very standard for lots that are so small. When you're looking at redevelopment and, uh, trying to build a home that meets today's basically livability, uh, type standards, but they were able to stay within the impervious surface, that's not changing. Uh, and, um, we're looking at, uh, variance in this, uh, particular case for just part of the driveway on part of the lot. We have the variance guideline, uh, procedures that, uh, are part of all variance applications, and these are intended to give guidance to Planning Commissioners and Council and staff. When reviewing variance applications, they're all unique. They're supposed to be unique circumstances is why you need the exception of variance. Uh, but how do you look at those as a city and make sure that you're not being arbitrary in how you, um, review applications? So they came up with these factors within this variance guideline policy, and that's what's used in terms of evaluating all variance applications. The subject site, uh, as you see, um, we do have this section here, which is their property line. So you have the south property line coming up from the lake, and then jotting to the north and over again to the east. This whole area in through here is public right-of-way. What the applicant is proposing to do, basically, is they're looking for a section about eleven feet, uh, in length in their driveway in this location, that would be, the driveway would be located closer than five feet to the side lot line. Uh, the point, uh, the most southeasterly point is where it gets closest, and then that's at one foot at that point. This area beyond, this is actually all public right-of-way, uh, so it's not part of the applicant's property. So we're just looking at, you know, basically the driveway in this section of the lot. Very small, very minimal. What I wanted to note for Planning Commission also is there is a standard for driveway width that it not exceed twenty-four feet at the property line. Uh, in this case, actually, um, we, again, we have this odd shape here, which is one of the rationale for granting variances, uh, something unique, not created by the applicant. But the widest part of the driveway, where it meets the public right-of-way, is just gonna be a little over sixteen feet. So it is actually a more narrow, um, section than a standard lot would have. So they're trying to stay within the intent of the ordinance. And again, uh, as part of the application, they are indicating that they're gonna be removing this excess, uh, blacktop area and re-establishing turf in that area. So actually, when people are walking or driving, uh, people that live in the area and they're looking in this location, for all intents and purposes, they're not gonna be able to tell that there's a variance to that driveway setback. It's just gonna look like continuous yard. So in terms of the variance considerations, um, the subject site was planted and developed prior to the ordinance being into effect. So that's something that is not within the, um, the applicant's, uh, ability to, um, basically to address. This is something that is, um, due to the ordinance as opposed to actions of the applicant. Uh, the property, again, um, uh, developed and, um, subdivided many, many years ago. Uh, that makes it a unique situation. The variance needed is very minimal, only eleven feet, basically, uh, in length along an entire driveway, which typically in a single-family home would be about thirty feet long, or plus or minus. Uh, and also, uh, the subject site and the streets were established before the owner purchased the property. So again, this is not something that is up there doing. The width of the driveway, uh, as we indicated, is going to be lesser than the twenty-four-foot standard it could be. Uh, it's in a regular-shaped lot. The neighboring properties are all fully developed, so this variance is not gonna alter the character of the area. Uh, and the area of the encroachment is very limited. In terms of applying the variance guideline policy, we have thirteen positive, three negative, and then three of the factors that are not applicable at all. The recommendation from staff is we are recommending, uh, to the Planning Commission approval of the conditional use permit and the variance, subject to, um, two conditions. And number one is that the conditions of the variance, basically, that were approved last year stay in effect, with the exception of the, uh, one-foot setback for the driveway. And then two, um, just reiterating that the excess blacktop in that area be removed and restored to, uh, to grass or some type of vegetation. With that, I can stand for questions.
Thank you. Commissioners?
Commissioner John?
The offer but, uh, test, one of the general guidelines asks about safety, and it was marked as yes. What is the safety concern? Do you know?
Um, the...
Will this be a safety?
No. Um, I think that...
What page is that on?
Yeah, does the proposed use result in safety improvement to the subject property? Does that have to do with the driveway width?
Oh, I see. Does proposed use result in a safety improvement to the subject property or the general public? What we're stating here is yes, because actually the width of the driveway is going to meet or be less. Uh, so they're trying to take into consideration, they have an oddly-shaped lot, um, they have this, you know, strange cutout here, and they're trying to address what they can to make that work, but still need that variance. So we felt that that was a positive response.
And can I ask another question?
Certainly.
So, once we, if we approve a variance, it lives with the property going forward? There's no problems with lawsuits or anything, if properties change hands or anything, laws lines, is that correct?
Correct. The variance, um, application, um, as long as it's used within the first year, um, it does run with the land, very similar to the conditional use permit. So even, you know, if another owner, when they buy the property, they will still also be, um, have the benefit of the variance and, uh, conditional use permit language and...
So no one, uh, neighbors can't say anything at some point if they were to change hands or anything like that? That's one foot from my property.
Nope, this is, and these, uh, legal documents, actually, if the council chooses to approve this, they will be filed at Dakota County on the property, so anyone doing any type of, uh, research will be able to see that that indeed, uh, is the case.
Thank you.
Sure.
Any other questions? Okay. With that, I will open the public hearing at six forty-eight. Is there anybody wishing to speak from the audience? Okay. I don't see anybody, so I will close the public hearing at six forty-nine. Commissioners, any other discussion? Is there a motion? Commissioner John?
I think this all fits within what were, um, all the variance levels that we talked about with CUP. Um, like you said, the property is small, it, um, oddly shaped, and, uh, the owner is doing what they can to make it fit in. I don't know if you guys agree or not, but...
Yep.
So then I will go ahead and make a motion, and my motion will be that...
She has it right up.
Oh, perfect. I recommend, or, that we recommend the City Council approve this one-foot side setback variance for the driveway and the CUP to allow standing seam metal roofing to be installed on the home and garage, subject to the two conditions laid out before on the recommendation.
Is there a second?
I second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Motion carries.
Thank you. Uh, this application then will be, um, provided to the City Council at their meeting, uh, next week on the, on October twenty-second, and that meeting does start at, uh, five-thirty in the evening. Thank you.
Okay, so the fourth item on the agenda is a public hearing for the city of Burnsville for an amendment to City Code Title Ten, Zoning, Chapter Seven, General Pro-Provisions, Section Four, Accessory Buildings and Structures, and eighteen Screening and Buffer Areas, and Chapters Fifteen, Nineteen, Twenty-two B, and Twenty-three of the Burnsville City Code to modify screening requirements for trash enclosures in multifamily commercial industrial areas presented by Ms. Arnold.
Thank you, Chair. Also, good evening, Planning Commission. Uh, so this ordinance amendment related to screening requirements, uh, comes as a result from some discussion at the City Council level. So initially, at their all-day work session, uh, this February two thousand and nineteen, um, the City Council indicated that they would like some more information on screening requirements that the city has for our, uh, commercial areas. Uh, so staff worked with a consultant to bring back, uh, some lengthy research comparing Burnsville's ordinance to other cities' ordinances, and, uh, discussed that at a work session in August with the City Council. Uh, at that work session, um, staff asked for a general direction on, on overall standards within the ordinance that Burnsville both has and doesn't have, that maybe we could implement. Uh, so, staff was directed by the City Council to move forward to eliminate some of the requirements for, uh, trash enclosures in commercial areas, uh, to make them consistent, um, and to remove, uh, the requirement for, uh, roof, uh, gate and consistent materials on accessory structures that withhold trash enclosures. Uh, so staff has brought forth the ordinance this evening, um, amending, uh, multiple sections of the City Code to meet this direction. Uh, so the intent of the proposed changes in this draft ordinance is to meet that direction, and also for staff to be able to provide some consistency within the different areas of the ordinance that refer to trash enclosure, accessory structures, and screening of, um, dumpster enclosures. Uh, so currently, um, prior to the proposed ordinance that's in your packet, uh, that each, uh, special requirement section for types of zoning districts has its own screening standards. Um, so that does include, uh, single-family residential, which is not being discussed this evening. Um, but it is held within of the special requirements for multi- multiple-family residential districts. Um, HOC, the heart of the city, has its own requirements, uh, the business and commercial and, uh, commercial within mixed use has its own requirements as well as industrial. So, uh, what staff is proposing this evening, um, is to create within the general provisions Screening and Buffer Areas ordinance a separate new section which will consolidate those requirements, uh, as one, uh, one section that states what the requirements are for trash enclosure screening, and then each individual, uh, special requirement section will reference back to this new section. So, uh, the key change here that I just described to you is that this new section in this paragraph in red on the PowerPoint, uh, was created, which states that, um, they must be screened, um, on three sides pursuant to this section. Uh, that's the existing screening section that it's pursuant to, um, which describes being a hundred percent screened and different materials that can be used. Um, or it can be screened from public view by the principal building, such as being behind it, uh, be stored within the principal building, or stored within an accessory structure. A gate is not required, and a roof is not required, and it's implied, but we will put that in there explicitly so that the direction of council is met, and future, uh, council members and residents or contractors can understand that. And then, um, continuing each section would define... And then continuing each section would define trash and mixed municipal solid waste, so we kept that in for consistency's sake. Another piece of the city council direction was that on, there are some lots, particularly shopping centers, that may be on a lot that has two or three frontages, where because the city of Burnsville's ordinance defines the front as any, any line that faces a public right-of-way to be the front, that there is no way for a trash enclosure to be in the back if all lots have three fronts. So they wanted staff to come up with a way to have some administrative leeway to help situations like these for someone to be able to build a trash enclosure that meets the city ordinance. So in this case, similar to one of the ordinances we'll discuss later this evening, that in a lot with two or more street frontages, trash enclosures are exempt from the requirements of ten-seven-four F, which is the section that states that they, an accessory building or structure cannot be located in front of the building, of the principal building. So we've added that in so that there's some leniency to those unique lots. And in this case, they would be subject to the front setback requirement, which is... So the, the front yard setback requirement, just for the respective zoning district. So that can vary between zoning districts. And so here is a chart that's explaining some, in more detail, exactly what has changed in the ordinance. As mentioned, all accessory structures previously could not be located closer to the front lot line than the principal structure. And now, this has been added as an exception for trash enclosure accessory structures in these multifamily, commercial, and industrial lots. We created this new screening section of the ordinance to create some consistency between district types and the screening options that they have. And then in each district, we met the council direction to remove the roof and door gate requirement. So trash enclosure accessory structures are also exempt from the requirement of being constructed with consistent materials to the building or by the same materials of the principal building, which is a requirement that the city of Burnsville had that when doing our peer research with our consultant, learned that that was not a very common requirement to have the same materials as the principal building. And city council felt that that was unnecessary and easy to remove to help trash enclosures not be so expensive for our applicants. So those are now exempt from that requirement. They will, of course, have to be constructed with materials that meet the building code and that are permitted materials in the city's ordinances. And in many cases, an applicant is going to bring forward materials that they believe match and fit well on-site typically anyway, just for their own consistency's sake. So staff is recommending that the planning commission recommend to the city council approval of the ordinance changes as presented, based on that chart. And then this will be a public hearing, and I can also stand for any questions about the specific ordinance changes, if there are any.
Thank you, commissioners. Commissioner John?
Yeah, so removing the roof, I, I understand the thought process there. Is there anything regulating that the trash container has to have a top on it? Or I'm just thinking of apartment complexes, looking down on, on such a... I don't know if that's been discussed in these sessions at all. I'm assuming that's why they require the roof in the first place, is some floors are higher up and looking down on trash is not a great place to live.
So typically, a roof requirement, whether it's in Burnsville's ordinance or other cities' ordinances, would be to prevent from wind blowing, just in case there isn't a roof that's on the actual dumpster itself. Dumpsters themselves are standardized and within the packet, and I can get you a page number in just a moment. But our consultant did interview trash haulers to talk with them about what they see and what they may have trouble with within the city when they're collecting and what, what ordinance requirements that we have that make things challenging. And the roof was a big challenge for trash haulers in our community. They stated in their interviews that whenever they were visiting their customers to pick up trash, that the equipment that they use is standardized. Dumpsters themselves are standardized, but the enclosures are not. So some enclosures are harder to reach with their machines that lift, and a roof creates more work and can be a safety concern to their employees if they have to remove the dumpster from the enclosure and then use their equipment to lift it into the, into the garbage truck. So that was one of the key concerns that was discussed at the council work session as to why, since dumpsters are standardized and typically do have a lid on them, that the roof requirement may be an unnecessary requirement in the city code that they'd like to see removed. That was the council discussion, that's what it centered around.
Was that the driving force behind some of these discussions is the issues with the haulers?
The driving force around some of these discussions and why it was brought up at work session had to do with the cost for someone to construct a trash enclosure that meets all of our materials requirements, having to build a roof, having to build a gate, and that, some of that, what was discussed was the evaluation of permits that we received for trash enclosures over twenty-eighteen. That was discussed at the twenty-nineteen all-day work session. So it started out being about cost, and when our consultant came in with some information from the trash haulers, that really affected the, the council, and that seemed to be a, a big driving factor in, in their decision to direct staff to remove that requirement at that August meeting.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Watt?
Yeah, I, I think this is great, and it was interesting to see what all of our neighboring cities and comparable communities have. My question's about a building with two fronts. So if you have, if like it's a corner building or it has two fronts, what, can the dumpster just be out in the parking lot? Or does it, does it need to be screened? It just doesn't have to be in the back?
It doesn't have to be in the back. It would still have to be screened on at least three sides, because we did get, we removed the gate or door requirements, but at least three of the sides have to be one hundred percent screened in a way that meets the ordinance, and they can, the applicant can choose how they wish to accomplish that, whether that's with screening materials, being inside an actual structure, landscaping, intense evergreen screening. So there, there are ways for them to, to meet that. But it would still, with the fronts, it would still need to meet that front yard setback. So typically, we may see an accessory structure front yard setback to be in line with the principal building. So while it, it could in some lots potentially be in the parking lot area, but it would, it could also be in line with the building, which previously we would have it set back behind it. So it could be close to the building. In many cases, in a commercial building or an industrial building, they want their trash enclosures to be either right next to or attached to the building. So that's still kind of the general area where we might see it. It's just that previously, they wouldn't have been able to put it on one of their fronts on, on a corner or three-front lot.
I have a follow-up question. So I was driving around looking at dumpsters and trash enclosures, and I, there, I saw a corner lot, you know, a building on a corner with just a dumpster sitting in the parking lot and no, you know, they didn't have any ability to screen it. It's an older building. Would, could this be a situation where it was kind of grandfathered in or a building that existed before this ordinance requirement came into place so that they don't, they don't have requirements?
It could be. Yes, it could be. And in many cases, in some of our older buildings, they may have been previously approved with interior trash handling, and as the uses in the building changed and their trash demands and recycling demands in particular, as those grew, there was no longer that space for them on the inside. And so our city staff works with our businesses that come in retroactively to apply for these permits for trash enclosures. And one of the things that could have been a challenge prior to these proposals is a situation like that, where there isn't, based on the age of the property, they could apply for the variance, through the variance process for the trash enclosure to be located in front of the building. But this is a way for staff to administratively get more of the dumpsters inside enclosures or screened in some way without having to go through a different process.
Thank you.
Commissioner Anderson?
I was just wondering, so for older buildings, are they grandfathered in so they don't need to have to enclose their, their trash outside? Or do they have to apply for variance not to do that?
So it can depend. Some buildings, if we signed off on a permit showing that their trash handling is covered the way that it is, then we, the city historically approved their trash handling in that manner. And then as rules changed over time, they may not need it now, but if they were to ever upgrade or expand their use of that trash handling, then they would need to meet current city code requirements. So this is a case where these new proposed changes, the intent is for them to assist, especially as many of our business uses are flipping or changing and redeveloping in this current kind of model that we see with commercial areas. So this is a way for, for them to have more options.
If I could add to that, actually, in the commercial, industrial, and multifamily districts, they've always needed to be screened. You can't just have a dumpster sitting out there. What happens a lot is we have these older planned unit developments or conditional use permits where they initially were going to have everything enclosed within the building, and they can't meet that anymore. So you'll see a dumpster out there, but we do work with folks through code enforcement to, you know, to address that appropriately. And as Ms. Arnold had indicated, we're looking at a less costly way for them to do that now and hopefully won't run into the same types of issues, because it has been a cost factor for like the older, especially type businesses or smaller businesses. You know, oh wow, now we need to come up with, you know, thousands and thousands of dollars, and we're just not able to do that. So hopefully this will help in that situation and accomplish both objectives. Thank you.
Okay, I do have a question. In your memo, page five in the packet, in the background overview section, you talk about not pursuing a minimum enclosure size. Do they have a minimum enclosure size now?
No. So that was one of the recommendations or options provided from the consultant that city council decided not to add. When they came forward at the work session, they gave ideas for parts of the Burnsville ordinance to eliminate or new things to add to it that would address issues such as recycling, organics recycling. Those types of things require, just based on their use, they require more space than a typical trash enclosure may have, based on the fact that dumpsters have a standardized size and things like that. So one of the options that our consultant had recommended was that Burnsville look into a minimum enclosure size. But the city council did not want to meet that or add that to the ordinance at this time, just based on, again, cost concerns for people that are applying for trash enclosures. So I referenced it in my background report because there was a lot of information on it in the previous packets, and I wanted to provide some context.
So is there typically just an unspoken appropriate size? Because I'm just worried that, you know, somebody's going to come in and do this tiny little trash enclosure and it not be sufficient. But you guys would catch that in your review though, as well, correct?
So that would be something that we would look at, and if we may see that something seems small, we could suggest to the applicant, especially if we know that they're a type of business that's going to need recycling needs or organics recycling needs. We could suggest that, but it isn't an ordinance requirement that we could ask them and require them to do as part of their approvals process. So there is no standard from the zoning ordinance side related to that. There are standards within the trash handling industry. So in many cases, when trash enclosures are designed, they typically, typically you would see one that at least is the size of their current existing dumpster, or maybe two of them, or whatever they anticipate their needs. The city council, when they were discussing this at their meeting, they felt that the business owner and the applicant would choose their, the size of their enclosure based on what they know of their type of business and what type of recycling demand or trash demand they may have, and that that would guide any size creation and not a city requirement that would guide that.
Okay, good. Thank you.
You're welcome.
If I could add to that, just to let you know too, there are some elements of the building code that call for certain area that needs to be provided for refuse, et cetera. There's also, we have the International Maintenance Code that's in place now that the city adopted here a year, maybe a couple of years ago. So in a situation, you, you are not able to have your trash just sitting out. You know, so if we had a situation where someone had a small, you know, they put just this little small thing in and having trash out there, we would have a mechanism through that code requirement or through code enforcement to deal with that. But it would be hopefully less, less expensive, meaning hopefully more people would be able to come into compliance, you know, without a large investment, that they would need a big unplanned investment.
Thank you. Any other questions, commissioners? Okay, with that, I will open the public hearing at seven-eleven P.M. So if there's anybody in the audience who wishes to speak about this item, please come to the podium. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing at, we'll round up to seven-twelve. Commissioners, any further discussion? Is there a motion? Commissioner John?
To me, it sounds like this has been well researched and it's going to simplify things for people coming in. I don't see any issues outside the... I do worry about having a top on there, but like you said, most trash enclosures do. I don't think it would be worthwhile to pursue that, so. With that, I'll make a motion that the, that we recommend to the city council to approve the ordinance and changes as presented in our, in our reports.
I second.
Commissioner Anderson? Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Motion carries. And this will be heard at the October twenty-second city council meeting. Okay. So the next item on the agenda is a public hearing for the city of Burnsville for an amendment to city code Title X zoning, Chapter seven, Section four, accessory buildings and structures, and Chapters twelve, thirteen, and twenty-six of the Burnsville City Code to modify provisions related to accessory structure setbacks in one-family residential districts and to add conditional land uses in the office in Industrial Park District, and it's presented by Ms. Arnold.
Thank you. So with this ordinance amendment, this is also related to some city council direction for change at the August work session. You may be somewhat familiar with the accessory structure setbacks changes that happened earlier this year. So at the, it was the May Planning Commission meeting that the Planning Commission reviewed this ordinance and reduced accessory structure setbacks on double-frontage lots in the lot line perceived as the rear of the home. And it's another case where the city ordinance defines the front as the, any lot line that faces public right-of-way. So there are homes that may back up to an arterial road, such as one of the county roads, where the lot technically by definition has two fronts. So this ordinance change that was suggested by the city council earlier this year was to provide a reduction in setback requirements. In that case, in that perceived rear yard for those homes, for the location of both, some language changes related to fencing as well as accessory structures like sheds. So the ordinance that's before you this evening is related to both double-frontage lots and corner lots, which were not discussed at that previous ordinance amendment. This was part of housekeeping changes earlier this year. So the corner lots are situated differently than a double-frontage lot. On a corner lot in a residential zoning district, the shortest lot line is the front lot line, and the longest or the longer lot line becomes the side yard street setback. So it is still considered the side yard, not the front, and it's the street face. Setback. So it is still considered the side yard, not the front and it's the street facing side yard. Um, at that June fourth city council meeting where the housekeeping amendment was approved. Um, the changes to double frontage lot setbacks to reduce that, um, setback by ten feet. Uh, in both the R one, uh, one family zoning district and the R one A rural one family zoning district, uh, was approved. Um, and with those changes, double frontage setbacks were consistent with corner lot setbacks for that side yard street. So that setback line when lots are, um, situated together, uh, was consistent. After some city council direction, um, at the August work session where staff brought forward some information. About, uh, corner lots in other cities and how it's defined as a front in some cities and it's just a regular side and others. The city council, um, directed staff to amend the ordinance to. Reduce the corner lot side yard, street setback, um, to ten feet, um, or to, um. I'm sorry, to ten feet and then, uh. Yes, sorry, to ten feet and then to go back into the double frontage lot and amend that again to make it. Down to ten feet in R one and twenty feet in R one A to maintain that consistency that was created. Um, so the key changes to the ordinance here are that accessory buildings on through lots in our districts. Um, satisfy principal yard, front yard setback in the case of the through or double frontage lot, front yard setback. Alluding the rear of the principal structure can be reduced by up to ten feet. So that was reduced. This is the previous change that you're seeing here and then, um. We've gone through in the, uh, new proposed sections to be changed to reduce it by another ten feet. For the, um, double frontage setbacks and then to reduce it by ten feet overall for the corner lot setbacks. This is a lot of language and saying the same words over and over, so I apologize for that. Cause I'm confusing myself too. So the proposed ordinance as well as amending the corner lot and double frontage accessory structure setbacks to ten feet. In the rear and twenty feet in the rear for R one A and side yard street. Um, we are also proposing adding mun- municipal buildings and structures as a conditional use in the I three office and industrial park zoning district. This is already a conditional use in the other industrial zoning districts. Staff considers this a housekeeping change, maintaining consistency between, yeah, industrial. Um, industrial zoning districts, um, and to accommodate future construction of, um, fire station one. A new fire station one. So key changes this evening related to setbacks. Um, we are changing the previous through a double frontage lot changes to reduce by, uh, twenty feet overall. Making it ten and the front era budding the rear of the primary structure. And then on the side yard street for accessory structures, changing that requirement from that twenty feet to ten feet. So accessory structures on double frontage and corner lots will be ten feet in the R one district and twenty feet in R one A. R one A in the one family rural zoning district, they have larger lot sizes overall, which is why they have larger setbacks. Um, additionally, as mentioned, it, the proposal does add the municipal buildings and structures, um, as a conditional use in I three. As a housekeeping change to the zoning ordinance. Um, so staff is recommending that the planning commission recommend to the city council approval of this ordinance as presented. Uh, this will also be a public hearing. Um, I do want to note just some staff considerations that I, um, left out of my PowerPoint. Um, with these changes, um, reviewing permit applications for accessory structures, no structure can be built within a drainage or utility easement. That does not, um, go away. So in some cases, your, um, side yard street setback may be ten feet, but maybe. Um, coincidentally, there's a utility easement that's twenty feet. That would still be a, a twenty foot setback from the property line for your accessory structure if, if your lot was situated, um, in that manner. Um, accessory structures greater than two hundred square feet do require a building permit, which is reviewed by building and planning staff. And then a zoning permit is required for accessory structures between fifty and two hundred square feet in which planning staff reviews. Easement locations, setback, materials, things like that. Um, so this is something, um, this is a. Portion of the ordinance that staff reviews daily and, um, are very familiar with and, um, helping, uh, applicants know where. Um, sheds can be placed and other accessory structures on their property. Um, but so staff has prepared this draft ordinance, um, with these changes within your packet. To meet the direction of the city council and I can stand for questions.
Thank you. Commissioners, any questions? Commissioner Awad.
Thank you for the report and the putting together an excellent presentation. I was surprised at how many through, you know, and starting to read, you know, reading through it. I thought, well, how, how many lots does this? You know, encompass, but then at the end of your report, you had all the, kind of all the lots called out. So it was interesting to see that. So sheds less than, this, this applies to any shed that's larger than fifty square feet. Is that what you said?
Now setbacks do apply to all accessory structures, whether or not they require a permit. Um, so let's say there is an accessory structure less than forty nine square feet, let's say, and they may, they may not be. Required to apply for a permit, but a, a setback would still be.
Okay.
Applicable.
Okay. And if it's less than fifty, and not that fit, not that there's that many fifty square foot sheds, but if it's less than fifty square feet. It's to, it needs to, it still needs to, well, you just said that it needs to be within the setback. Yeah, okay, thank you.
Commissioner John.
As a layman, uh, help me understand why there is a setback and why. A twenty foot setback would be required for the rural residential.
Um, in many cases, it's because it's adjacent to a street. Um, it's a safety concern, um, particularly on a through lot that backs up to an arterial road. Um, in that case, uh, let's say, um. Cars that maybe are, um, going off the road into the shoulder or something like that and, um, having a, a piece of your, your property. And your assets in the shed near that, near the street, um, would have been a concern. Um, a lot of the setback requirements that were in Burnsville's ordinance before these two changes. Um, were the development standards of the time, um, from the beginning of creating, uh, Burnsville's codes and ordinances for construction of single family homes. So, um, it is the development pattern that majority of the properties in Burnsville meet. Um, as well as just typical suburban, uh, style of, of development of single family neighborhoods. Um, that their, uh, accessory structures are in the rear or the side yard, but they're not. Um, that close to neighboring property lines, whether it's your neighbor or whether it's the public street, um, no matter the traffic.
Okay, and why so much more for a rural area rather than a local areas or?
Uh, setbacks in general are larger on larger lots, um, because the buildable area is already so large. On a larger lot that there's, um, there's just that separation in between structures and the setback is part of that separation.
Okay.
And, sorry, go ahead Ms. Girls.
Um, also in southwest Burnsville, um, or in rural areas when you have, um. The area that does not have city sewer and water, um, once they do get city sewer and water, then things need to happen. Like you usually end up expanding the road widths, putting curbs where curbs weren't required before, those types of things. Um, also along some of these, um, you have higher, um, traffic streets, uh, and faster streets. So having that setback a little bit further, kind of goes along with, you know, the rural versus urban, uh, character. Uh, and then also, uh, as, uh, Ms. Arnold had indicated, uh, it does, uh, go along with the just standard building envelope. A lot of times too, again, because they weren't developed yet. Or, or I mean, formally, um, subdivided and platted, they don't have drainage and utility easements, et cetera. So when you have ci- city sewer and water come by, then generally what happens is people start wanting to divide their bigger properties into smaller properties. And then you need to, uh, you know, uh, apply or add easements and, and different things. So. That's where that, uh, that difference comes into play with those setbacks.
Thank you, thank you both. Appreciate the lesson there.
Commissioner Anderson.
I was just wondering, when you're, um, referring to accessory structures, um. Do things like a child's play, like playground kind of thing count as an accessory structure?
Um, if it's, um, and Ms. Girls may be able to help me out with this a little bit. Um, part of it does have to do with, uh, what is a structure? Is there a roof? Is there a door? Is it a structure? Um, but yes, so, um, part of our, um. Ordinance does reference as well, um, like trampolines, for example, need to meet, um, accessory structures. They cannot be located. Um, in front of the home, I believe. So there are just some different. Yes, they do, um, but whether or not it's so much of a structure that it requires a building permit. There are a lot of different levels of, um. That may regulate something like that, um, just depending on the scale, uh, kind of. I hope that's a sufficient answer. I don't know if you could.
Yeah, it does. It does de- depend, um, and a lot of these, you know, when you're getting into, um, play structures and things like that, for the most part. Um, there's not going to be an issue with that, um, but if you decide that you'd like to have, you know, a two hundred square foot playhouse. Um, then, you know, a- attached with the swings and whatever, then, you know, it would apply. Um, we have similar kinds of questions come up for, um, things that people are doing more and more, you know, with the outdoor, uh, outdoor rooms basically. With the barbecues and, you know, at what point is it a structure versus not? And it's really a matter of following the, uh, ordinance definitions and then building code with those. But generally speaking, you know, uh, like a rainbow play systems or something type structure. Um, should not have any issues in terms of meeting setbacks or those types of things.
Just out of curiosity, and this is kind of, to be honest, kind of a personal question. When, when it, i- is it just the actual size that matters the most? Cause when, like, for example, when my wife and I moved into our place, there was, uh, a structure already back there, a little playground. Uh, my son is obsessed with American Ninja Warriors, so I've actually slowly been building onto it to make it bigger. Uh, is there like a limit that I should be thinking about in my head when I'm doing this or is it, if there's one structure here and then one that's like. Ten feet away, is that considered one structure or two, even though they're the same thing or?
I think it really depends on, you know, what it is, like if you have different, say, equipment, um, you know, like. Flagpoles are looked at differently than a building, you know, that could be occupied or, or whatever. So if you're looking at, you know, the typical things that I think of for, you know, um, the, um. Oh, I guess this is kind of the circuit, you know, of things that they do. I don't think that there would be issues with that. Yeah, I, I don't believe that there should be.
Any other questions? Okay, with that, I will open the public hearing at seven twenty seven. If there's anybody in the audience who would like to speak about this topic, please come to the podium. Okay, seeing none, I will close the public hearing at seven twenty eight. Commissioners, any more discussion? Is there a motion?
Uh, I would like to make a motion, uh, that the planning commission recommend to the city council approval for the ordinance changes as presented.
Second.
Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed say nay. Motion carries.
Thank you.
And this item will be heard on the October twenty second city council. So the last item are updates. Commissioners, any updates? Staff, updates?
Sarah. Yes, so, um.
Bring that to your seat.
Uh, so I'm going to be distributing, um, instead of a draft agenda, this week we have. Information about some upcoming meetings that, um, you may already be aware of from communication with our community development assistant. Um, but the October twenty eighth planning commission, your next typical meeting is canceled. Um, there will be no items, so there will be no meeting. Uh, the next meeting following that, uh, the November fourteenth planning commission meeting, um, is also canceled. Uh, due to, um, uh, Veterans Day week and some room availability issues. So we, we're not able to procure a room for the planning commission meeting. However, um, in lieu of that, we've combined the planning commission and economic development. Commission again for further updates on the proposed changes to the parking ordinance, to the transit oriented development ordinance. And then we're also including an update from our city engineer on the traffic study over the county road forty two area. Uh, which you may have heard a little bit about with these, um, vision plan for the Burnsville center. Area and county road forty two corridor from last summer, if you were involved in that at all. Um, so there will be several fun and exciting updates and a joint discussion and learning session with the economic development com- commission. On November thirteenth, in lieu of that November fourteenth, uh, planning commission meeting, we've combined forces, um, due to the. Unfortunate timing of Veterans Day. How else to say that, um, but you will have a. Regular planning commission meeting on November twenty fifth, uh, at six thirty, uh, normal with, um, items and your favorite staff members.
We do also have, um, one of the items that's listed on November twenty fifth is, uh, this Hampton Companies project. Um, it is a, uh, thirty two unit senior care facility, um, memory care and assisted living. Um, we thought that they would, um, be ready to go for October twenty eighth, um, but they're not quite there yet. We will have a neighborhood meeting for them here in the city council's chambers, uh, this week. It's Wednesday night on the sixteenth, uh, starting at six thirty. So, um, we think it's a, um, you know, great use for this particular property on one hundred and thirty four street. It's right by the Super America over there near county road eleven and one hundred and thirty fourth. It's at Fake and Peace, um, it's been there forever. There have been all sorts of different proposals on it. And this one is probably the least, I think objectionable in terms of, you know, the neighborhoods and things and, and hopefully will fit in well, so. That's all I have. Thank you.
And our upcoming items, you can see on the development map on the website, so you can be prepared for what's going to be coming. Since there won't be an official draft agenda for that meeting, um, this far in advance.
So if there's no more items on the agenda, would someone like to make a motion to adjourn?
I move that we, uh, adjourn the meeting.
I will second that we adjourn the meeting.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed say nay. Motion carries. Thank you.